There's a place for us. Somewhere, a place for us. With peace and quiet and open air. It waits for us somewhere. And there's a time for us. Someday, a time for us. With time together, with time to share. Time to learn, time to care. Someday, somewhere else. We'll find a new way of living. We'll find a way of forgiving. Somewhere. And there's, there is a place for us. There is a time, there is a place for us. Hold my hand, we're halfway there. Hold my hand, I will take you there. Someday, somehow. We'll find a new way of living. We'll find a way of forgiving. Somewhere. And there's, oh I know there is a place for us. Oh I know there is a time, there is a place for us. Won't you hold my hand? And we are halfway there. Hold my hand, I will take you there. Thank you very much indeed, a very, very good evening ladies and gentlemen. My name's Bob, it's my pleasure to be one of your co-hosts and compairs of that very special evening. Are we all in a nice friendly mood before we start?
Yeah!
All looking forward to a smashing evening of entertainment. It is of course welcome to Miss Cunnetly. Presented by the Cunnetly Borough Council. With the prizes tonight being generously sponsored by the Cunnetly Star and its advertisers. And being a rather special occasion, a nice important night. It's only fitting that we have special dignitaries who have given up their time to come along and be with us this evening. I'm delighted to tell you amongst you in the audience tonight, I'd ask you to make them feel nice and welcome. Giving up a very busy schedule to be with us this evening, we do have with us the Mayor and Mayoress, Councillor and Mrs John Evans. Now in any competition ladies and gentlemen, you have to have winners of course. Now every lady that comes onto the stage is of course a winner. Whether you've come here to support a personal friend, a relative, I know you're going to give all the ladies great encouragement. But of course there can only be a certain amount of winners, one actual first place and then a couple of runners up. And to select them, I'm never sure whether that's an ambitious task or not to be a judge. Because I think it's a very arduous task to come out there and try and pick winners. It's very, very difficult, but we have people who have come along prepared to give up their time to come along and be our judges this evening. And I'm delighted to first of all introduce a gentleman who I've watched on television many, many times just like everybody else. And he's at the top of the tree of his particular sport. He is local from the area, he is of course the pride of Cunnetly, Bury Falls and of course the whole of Wales. He's now currently ranked 11 in the world in his chosen sport. But of course none of us will ever forget 1979 when he became World Champion of the World of Snooker. Let's say a nice hello to Terry Griffiths please. Delighted to see you Terry, you're on holiday at the moment, or he says he's resting at the moment. Not the tournament time, it's golf at the moment. He shot a good 84 at Fairwood today, pleased with that. Remaining in the world of sport, we're delighted to have with us another one of Wales' top sportsmen. In fact, he is ranked 11 in the world in his chosen sport. He is the Wales number one and has been for eight years. He is the captain of the League's Welsh Wizards squash team. Who are the only team in Great Britain out of England and now the top of the league. He is also the reigning European Champion at squash. Please say a nice hello to Adrian Davis. We're delighted to have with us ladies and gentlemen, the Deputy Mayor, Borough Councillor Bryn Davies please. Also would you please say a nice hello to Cunnetly Borough Council Chief Executive Bryn Parry-Jones please. It's about time we had some fair sex on the judging panel, don't you agree? I think so. We have a delightful lady who I know you're going to give a nice hello to. She is the chief reporter for our sponsors tonight, the Cunnetly Star. Say hello to the very lovely Vicky King. And our final adjudicator tonight ladies and gentlemen is the Chairman of the Cunnetly Borough Council Recreation Department Roy Coslett. Now of course we have our judges, but we do need two scrutineers to ensure that fair play is kept right throughout the evening. To make sure the points are added up correctly, checked, rechecked, double-checked and triple-checked. Everything's kept in order. And our scrutineers this evening, we're delighted to have with us the editor of the Cunnetly Star. Please say hello to Robert Lloyd. And of course where would we be without the theatre manager here at this lovely Cunnetly Entertainment Centre? Of course Joe Phillips. Joe's going to make sure that everyone is seating correctly, all in their right seats. Enjoy yourselves, have a smashing evening, I know that you will. And I'm sure you're going to come up with a very, very popular result a little later on in the evening. Now I know just about everybody in the auditorium has a nice programme. And in the centre of the programme is a list of all the young ladies who are in the competition tonight. Can I just mention, just so that when you're checking your cards you know? That three young ladies are unable to be with us this evening for one reason or another. Contestants number seven, eighteen and twenty-one have not been able unfortunately to be with us tonight. So unfortunately we do not have twenty-two ladies, we have nineteen ladies in the competition. So if you just make a note of that, you'll know exactly who you're trying to score as you go along. So I'm sure most of you would like to be out there making a few notes of who you'd like to see do well in the competition. Can I just mention why our judges are settling themselves down? The competition itself is in fact in three parts. Now in the first half of the show, you'll first of all see the young ladies in their chosen day wear outfits. After that, you will see the ladies in their chosen evening wear outfits. And then in the second half of the show, when we come back after the interval. The third part of the competition will take place when seven of the ladies, seven of the nineteen girls will be coming back for further judging. And they'll have a short interview on the microphone. So I would presume the judges tonight are looking for not just beauty, but for dress sense, personality, pause, deportment. And of course hairstyle etcetera, and their personality on the microphone. Now, as I'm sure you appreciate ladies in the audience with chosen day wear and evening wear. It probably takes a lady to understand and know all the names of the various parts of the outfits that the ladies are wearing. So I'm delighted now to introduce you to my co-presenter of the contest tonight. The young lady will be telling you exactly who the contestants are, a little bit about the ladies and of course what they are wearing. She is of course the lady from Swansea Sound, a local newsreader and reporter from a very populous Swansea Sound radio station. Please say a lovely hello to Lynne Courtney please. Grazie, I'm going to hand over to Lynne. Enjoy yourselves, we'll see you a little bit later on Lynne, over to you.
The judges start with number one, Lisa Jones White. She weighs twenty and she loves to play. She's a hobby of jogging and playing football. And her ambition is overall of the world. Actually, I don't know how to do that. Number two, Sharon Davenport. Sharon is a lovely girl, a very talented, sharp and intelligent woman. She's worked for the police, she's a rapist, she's fought people in the police. Her ambition is to travel the world, let no team get away. Sharon, thank you for your wonderful, blessed 26th birthday. She's got dark hair and probably can't believe she's got hairline. Next we've got number three Caroline Tracy Higginson. Her hobbies are sewing and swimming. She's aged eighteen, her ambition is to enter the game. She's wearing long, plump, easy to pull off outfits with long flaps and a tie at the back. She's five foot one inch tall, blonde hair, blue eyes and a fashion model thirty-four, twenty-four, thirty-four. Now for my next question, Kim Reese Jones. And her hobby is swimming, she's been in terrific shape. Okay, my name is, about right, I'm from London. And she's thirty-eight, thirty-eight, she's wearing a short suit, a cute t-shirt top. She's a, I'm not sure what's that. Next we've got number six, Sharon. Sharon, so obviously named in my outfit, she's a girl of the past. And she's married, she's a, Sharon is aged twenty-four. And she's, her job's very caring, she's got a character, Sharon has the elderly. Her hobby is disco dancing and also a dancer. Next number eight Catherine Waite. Catherine in twentysix and her occupation is part-time care assistant. Her hobbies are hairdressing and dancing and her ambition really is, she wants to meet some best friends alone. Why do you want to, you really like to do? Is it her, she's there, is it her? She's wearing a white shirt, look at the pink on the top and a very nice lace detailled fabric on the leather jacket. Catherine Waite who's five foot five, brown hair, blue eyes, thirty-six, twenty-eight, thirty-eight. Next we've got number nine Claire Diggs. Claire's seventeen and she's a student. She has a hobby of modelling, horse riding and overseeing travel. And her ambition is to be a professional model. Came to our palatine competition with lovely lady who's here on the corner. She's five foot six and a half, thirty-three, twenty-four, thirty-four, blue eyes and blonde hair. That's number nine Claire Diggs. Next we've got number ten Linda Derrick. Her hobby is, her ambition also to travel. She's five foot nine and a half inches tall, she's got long hair, brown eyes and brown hair. She's very amazing, she's a light lady, a very nice gold plaid design, very noticeable, they're about to be done. And number ten Linda Derrick. Next we've got number eleven Linda Cunningham. Linda is twenty-three and she's wearing a very traditional sort of outfit, rock colour, traditional collars suit. Very sort of holiday spirit here with Linda. She's an assistant manager and her hobbies are photography and swimming. And she wants to be a total manager. She's five foot four, blue hair, not blue hair, that's wrong, isn't it? Linda Cunningham, number eleven. Next we've got number twelve Elizabeth Ballow. She's got a very original occupation, it's grading surgical gloves. Some really unique hobbies, kickboxing, akido? Akido, sorry, which was a hobby. And she's got a really good ambition to fly in a hot air balloon. Elizabeth's wearing a cross suit with a very colourful antique colour design and matching top. She's five foot six with blue eyes and brown hair. Next we've got number thirteen Julie Garland. Julie is a housewife and mum and her hobbies are singing with my children. And dancing and barking hunting. She's five foot six and is thirty-four, twenty-six, thirty-six. A very casual woman tonight, lovely yellow top, flowered shorts and a very nice contrasting bra through the beads to set the atmosphere. Next we've got number fourteen Clara who's twenty-six and she's another housewife. And her hobbies are sport and modelling. And she's got a very weird ambition to build my own house. I don't know whether she means brick by brick, but I'll put it here, to build my own house. She's five foot ten, thirty-six, twenty-six, thirty-six. She's wearing a very nice navy skirt, an off-white top with a navy trim on the jacket, a bar, very nice bow. Twenty-six-year-old Clara Evans from Cunnetly, perhaps she wrote the name. Number fifteen Estelle Egerich. She's aged seventeen and she's a student. Her hobbies are books, keep fit and socialising. And her ambition is to be a successful teacher. She's five foot four, blue eyes and light brown hair. She's wearing a three D short suit with peach top and a double-breasted wool jacket. That's number fifteen Estelle Egerich. Next we've got number sixteen Julie Howells, a housewife. And she says a monster hobby, she rides horses. And her ambition is to travel the world. She's wearing a nice casual leather suit today, leather shorts suit with a set of t-shirt. And she's blonde hair and blue eyes, five foot four, thirty-six, twenty-six, thirty-four. That's Julie Howells, aged twenty-seven from Clonkenham, number sixteen. Next we've got number seventeen, we've got the beautiful Claire from Frumpan, she's aged twenty-four. She's got an interesting occupation, she's an antique dealer. And her hobbies are interior design and painting. And she says she wants to own a cottage in the country. She's wearing a lovely canary yellow double-breasted flower and a black skirt, too much. Five foot seven with unusually coloured green eyes and olive hair, that's Louise Claire, number ten. Next we've got number nineteen Alison Elizabeth Ray, aged seventeen and she's a student. Her hobbies are aerobics, swimming and reading. And she's got a very good ambition to, she wants to star in a Broadway musical. She's five foot eleven, measurements are thirty-four, twenty-six, thirty-four, hazel eye and brown hair. She's wearing black trousers and a black and white shirt with a bold collared tail, a little sixties there, black and white tops. Alison Elizabeth Ray, number nineteen. Next we've got number twenty Jane East. She's a sales cashier, her hobbies are singing and clothes. She wants to become a singer entertainer. She's five foot four and is wearing a navy white colossus with a tie above, very ideal, a spotted outfit, very nice indeed. She's five foot four, brown hair and brown eyes. That's Jane East, number twenty. Last but not least, we've got number twenty-two Lisa Marie Williams from Clonkenham Delight. She's aged seventeen and she's a student. Her hobbies are walking, socialising and working with the elderly. And her ambition is to specialise in elderly nursing. She's five foot four, thirty-six, twenty-eight, thirty-eight with blonde hair and blue eyes. And for her day wear outfits, she's got lavender trousers and a lovely lacing cream blouse. That's number twenty-two Lisa Marie Williams.
Beautifully darling, come on, how about that? Beautifully explained, beautiful everything tonight, thank you. Lynne, are you going to have a little chat with the girls now to make sure what they're wearing? That's lovely.
I'm going to sort them out, thanks so much Bob.
Thanks Lynne, very much indeed Lynne ladies and gentlemen, bless. Lynne's just going back to the dressing room, see that's why they wouldn't let me do that job. I could have gone back to the dressing room now to change and all that, they haven't let me. Lynne's going to go back there and make sure that all the girls are comfortable, make sure all the labels are tucked into the back. That they change into their chosen evening wear. And then when they do come out in their evening wear, of course Lynne will be back to explain once again exactly what the girls are wearing. In between times while the girls are changing, it'd be nice, I hear you say, to have a little break, a nice little bit of cabaret. But we have that for you right now. In the form of a lovely lady that I bumped into a couple of weeks ago, right here in this lovely entertainment centre. Because she was taking part, although to look at her you wouldn't think she was old enough. Because she was taking part in the National Senior Citizens Talent Competition, the Cunnetly Area Final. She won the competition, she's absolutely marvelous. She goes on in June the twentieth at Everveil to compete in the South Wales round of the competition. Hopefully from there she will go on to the national final. She's got an absolutely superb singing voice. And I know Joe thought it'd be a smashing idea to bring the winner back tonight to entertain you at this particular stage of the competition. So please say a lovely big, big hello with a form for a round of applause. And say a meet and greet to lovely Julie Palmer.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, and good evening to you all. For my next song I've chosen a song recorded by two Welsh artists, Tom Jones and Dorothy Squires. And I think a very lovely ballad, 'Ten'. Now I see, our hearts are in the air.
Very lovely to meet you all, Julie Garlick, ladies and gentlemen. What a lovely voice you have Julie, all the best on the next round, Everveil. Thank you Julie, massive. Right, I'll just have a little bit of a get me over to here, will it? Even a minute, oh, hang on. Just put this up a little bit. Do you all enjoy that? Yeah? Smashing, magic. That's right? Should be better now? Good, good. Right here, we come to part two of the competition as such, ladies and gentlemen, because now we invite the ladies out in their chosen evening wear. There's some lovely girls, they're all winners of course, they all look absolutely superb and they have chosen some lovely outfits to come out and wear tonight and to explain about the outfits, about the young ladies once again. Let's reintroduce our lovely co-presenter tonight, Lyn Courtney, here she is.
Right, now we've got one again, Lisa Jane White. Wearing a white jacket with gold buckle, black skirts. Lisa is aged 20 and has a very special beauty therapist. Set off the outfit Lisa Jane is wearing, a gold ear and a gold bracelet. Lisa Jane White, number one, aged 20. Next we have number two, Sharon. She's wearing a lovely fitted black dress with a fishtail effect. Some lovely sparkly jewellery, lovely sparkly necklace and earrings to set off her outfit. If you remember Sharon in the first part wore a very striking red dress also. Number two, Sharon Daniels. Next we've got number three, Caroline Tracy Hipkiss, aged 18. Caroline is wearing a very striking black outfit with pink pocket tops. A peplum detail on the jacket. Wearing like a gold jewelry to match and peplum detail with the skirt at the back there. That's number three, 18-year-old Caroline Tracy Hipkiss. Next we've got number four, 19-year-old Christina Williams. Wearing a little powder filled colour outfit with a peplum jacket and matching striped skirt. Lovely lace trim under the jacket as well, off the shoulder number here of Christina Williams. That's number four, Christina Williams. Next we've got number five, Kim Reese Jones, aged 17. She's wearing a navy biora dress. She's got a white bolero top with a sign on the bolero top. And she's setting off the outfit with some white pearls. Seventeen-year-old Kim Reese Jones, who is a sales assistant, number five. Next we've got number six, Sharon Evans, 24-year-old Sharon Evans. She's wearing a navy white, it's called a Valerina dress and it's got roses around the neckline. And Sharon is also wearing pearls to set off her dress. That's number six, Sharon Evans. Next number eight, Catherine Waite. Catherine is wearing a very striking black dress with fishtails. Very nice detail on the dress, sequin jacket, sparkly necklace to go with it. Sparkly bolero top there. 28-year-old Catherine Waite, number eight. Next, number nine, Claire Davis. Seventeen-year-old Claire, student and is wearing not the white biora outfit, but also with a bolero jacket. She's wearing gold jewelry to go with her outfit and a lute special purple and hair. Number nine, 17-year-old Claire Davis. Next we've got number 10, Linda Derek from Burryport. Linda's wearing a lovely red stroppy dress, a bit of the 30s look about it. Beaded sequins on the top of the dress. And a concert of struts at the back. Very simple, very stunning dress. That's number 10, Linda Derek from Burryport. Next, number 11, Linda Cunningham from Chelmsford. 23-year-old Linda is wearing a black crepe dress with what's plain as a handkerchief hat. Linda wore a rock colour day dress with a burglar top and now she's carrying a fashion style black crepe dress. Number 11, Linda Cunningham. Next we've got number 12, Elizabeth Bennet. 27-year-old Elizabeth from Clonaklaw is wearing a fitted jockless dress. Most interesting sleeve here, she's got white sleeves that are actually separate from the dress. With a black sky trim, very, very nice and gold jewellery to set it off. That's number 12, Elizabeth Bennet, with her unusual hobbies of kickboxing. Number 12, Elizabeth Bennet from Clonaklaw. Next we've got number 13, Julie Garlick. Touch of soup here from Julie, her pyram pants outfit on. Very exotic look here from Julie Garlick. Who is her wife and her and makes dancing and barking hunting amongst her hobbies. Who is her wife and aunt, and Greg's dancing and Morgan hunting among the couples. That's number thirteen, Julie Garlic from Huthwell. Next, we've got number fourteen, Claire Evans. Claire is wearing a very nice stroppy dress here with sequin top. Simple style, a very striking dress. Claire, who's twenty-six, is our housewife, and this is amongst her hobbies, sports and modeling. And I just remind you, she's going to build her own house. That's number fourteen, Claire Evans. Next, number fifteen, Estelle Etheridge. Wearing a very striking white trunk with lovely flowing trousers, lots of pleats on the trousers. Somebody in the backstage said they were diaphanous, but we're not sure what that means, but there they are. Lovely jacket. Very stunning outfit there. Number fifteen, Estelle Etheridge from Huthwell. Next, we've got number sixteen, Julie Howell from Flannan Gennett. With a housewife. Julie is wearing a blood skirt with a silver blouse with a blood design to match the outfit she's got. Gold chains and gold earrings and a blood bow to set off her hairstyle. That's Julie Howell, number sixteen, from Flannan Gennett. Next, we've got number seventeen, Louise Clements from Cross Hands. Now Louise is wearing what she calls her Doris Day dress. She loves the style that Doris Day used to wear in films and everything, so she calls her Doris Day dress. Louise is an antique stealer, she's aged twenty-four, which is five foot seven. That's number seventeen, Louise Clements from Cross Hands. Next, number nineteen, Alison Elizabeth Ray from Chinsarin. Alison is wearing a blood dress with a white bolero jacket and some very, very nice gold jewellery, gold necklace, and also a gold earring to set off the outfit. Very simple, a very stunning outfit there. Number nineteen, Alison Elizabeth Ray from Chinsarin. Next, we've got number twenty, Jane East. Jane is wearing a black velvet dress with emerald green pop sleeves set off. A very heavy gold necklace there, very elegant outfit. And Jane wants to become a singer and entertainer. Number twenty, Jane East. And finally, number twenty-two, Lisa Marie Williams from Hunter Delai. Lisa Marie is wearing a dusty pink dress, dusty pink dress with matching jacket and got very nice satin detail on the sleeves. Very nice, like cake sleeves really. Lisa Marie is seventeen and she's a student, and she wants a fresh mind and elderly nursing. That's number twenty-two, Lisa Marie Williams. That's all the girls who've seen now, so perhaps they'd all like to come back onto the stage, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, that is the final time that you're going to see all of our nineteen ladies on stage together. How about a big, big thank you for all of our contestants today. This will naturally have been, after one, understood. Ladies and gentlemen, the competition's hot tonight, isn't it? Unfortunately, there can only be about seven ladies that are going to be invited back to the next stage of the competition. We haven't quite finished the first half of the show, because we do have a little something for all the girls for coming along and entering our competition tonight. But this is Nigel opportunity to thank the judges thus so far. They have a lot more still to do when we reintroduce our final seven ladies. But as the judges leave us, would you give them some encouragement, because they have a very arduous task ahead of them now to pick those seven ladies? So as they leave us, how about a big round of applause for our contestants tonight? Lovely job, lovely music, love. I'm sure you appreciate, ladies and gentlemen, may I just say you've been absolutely superb. Lots of applause for all of the girls, whether you've come to support them individually as a friend or as a relation. You've given all the girls great encouragement tonight, which sincerely hope all the girls have enjoyed being with us. Whether they've been on the stage before in a competition like this, or whether they haven't, I can assure you, it's very, very nerve-wracking, in such a wonderful auditorium, under such bright lights, and in front of such a large audience, as lovely as you are. So a little thank you from Penetling Bar and Council and the sponsors, etc. We have a little bottle of wine for all of our girls at this stage of the competition. Lynne, you gonna help me give them away? Why not? How about one more applause for all the girls, and a lovely Lynne, who has done absolutely superb job tonight for us. Lynne Courtney, congratulations. You've been absolutely lovely. We're going into interval time, the ladies are gonna leave, and there's one bottle left over. This is for the lovely Lynne, what a superb job. Lynne Courtney, ladies and gentlemen, superb. We wish the girls all the best, fingers crossed for them as they leave. There's a big round of applause for all of our time this tonight, thank you very, very much indeed. Absolutely superb. We wish you well. Who's coming back? You'll know in about fifteen minutes' time, fingers crossed. Thanks very much. I enjoyed it, Lynne. Well, a nice big thank you playing the music so beautifully all night, resonating in between Robert Jenkins on the keyboard, Nick Johnson playing, lovely. Ladies and gentlemen, I have the seven names of the ladies who are coming back for further judging. Can I just say at this point, our judges are re-seated, and the points that the ladies obtained to get to this stage of the competition are now discarded, and of course, the judges' start afresh. Now, we've seen the ladies' looks, we've checked their dress sense, their hairstyles, their deportment. Now's the moment where personality really comes into its own in the competition, because the ladies we invite back now will come down and have a short interview on the microphone. Now, as I'm sure you appreciate, you have no idea when the competition starts, who the seven ladies are going to be, so it's all going to be a little bit ad lib off the cuff, but I'm sure if you listen nice and attentively and closely, you'll hear exactly what the ladies have to say. I believe we have eight ladies, in fact, coming back to this stage of the competition, so obviously things are very, very close in the judges' mind up till now. Now, from past experience, I've always appreciated that the girls, when they come and they find out they're number one, they go, "Oh God, I don't want to be the first one out", frightened to death. But it wasn't a bad choice to be number one tonight, because she's our first lady coming back, so it's, you know, the question, number one first. Lovely smile, it's lovely. To Lisa Jane White. Hello, Lisa. Congratulations, you're getting back to this stage of the competition, pleased to be back? Smash it. I looked down on your card and it says occupation, beauty therapist, and your ambition is to own your own salon, so obviously you want to get into it as quickly as possible. Are you totally qualified, etc?
I am qualified, yes, I'm working in a salon at the moment.
Are you allowed to advertise from like who for? Is that, is that in order?
Alfreda Corfe.
Alfreda, that sounds rather nice, doesn't it?
And I'm helping to own a salon, after having experienced from here.
I see, lovely, very nice. Did you have to do so many years' training to do that?
Yes, I did three years' training in the conference institute.
Smash it. Now, I'm not, obviously, interviewed every time, look at my face, you've got a face like this type can, do you? It's very, very important to ladies, their beauty, therapy, etc. What actually do you do, is it fingernails, makeup, that sort of thing?
I do creative things from facial, manicure, pedicure, I do leg waxing, I do hair removal, buzzing massage, anything you like.
Well, if I need any hairs removed, I'll have a go. When you're not doing that, and we sincerely hope that you fulfill your ambition and do open your own salon very shortly, you enjoy drawing and keeping fit? What is that, character choice, sketching, or what?
I just like sketching and moving, and I'm super nice.
Lovely, talented lady all the way around, and keeping fit? How do you about, go about keeping fit, Lisa?
I just do it at home on my own. When I was in college, we did it as part of our course, so I just kind of did it on my own.
It's doing you no harm at all, Lisa. You look absolutely superb, you're a lovely smile for everybody. Was it, was there a draw to be number one tonight, or did you just walk in tonight and find out?
I really don't know. I mean, it's not me, this.
Well, you've done an absolute superb job for us so far this evening. I may not wish you all the very best of luck with the rest of the competition, and thanks for being the superb number one for us. Lisa Jane White, confidently, thirty years of age. Well done, Lisa. Our next finalist coming back, ladies and gentlemen, in fact, is contestant number two, it's Sharon Daniels. Lovely smile for us, Sharon, smash it, absolutely superb. Now, you work for the Princess Trust, could you enlighten us all, I'm sure everyone else knows, I'm not quite sure what it is, tell us all about it.
Well, it was a three-months course, and it finished last Friday, and we were serving the community, clearly, we were working with the mentally handicapped, and we were, we entered a competition in print school for agriculture and gardening, weekend first, and we went rock hopping, rock climbing, abseiling, canoeing, you name it, we did.
Smash it, sounds like you really enjoyed yourself.
It was absolutely wonderful.
Lovely, because in your spare time also, you are a sporty type, you enjoy sports and craft, any particular sport?
I used to play hockey at school, I tried to do athletic work up to the week, as women.
Palinetic, is that another one of those possible, is it for the aerobics, is it?
Yes, similar, it's muscle, deep down, it's a problem.
Deep down muscle toning, thank you for everything in the right places, it looks good to me, I tell you, right? You also enjoy acting, Sharon, is this for a local repertory company?
My repertory, Clancy and Peter, we've done seven shows, we've done more, so I've been in about twelve, I'm really active.
Smash it, so are you more on the serious side, or do you like comedy acting, or both?
Serious side mostly, but I've done a few comedy acts.
Really? How about the musicals, you've got a singing voice to be in a musical as well?
I have been in musicals, but I haven't got a singing voice.
So you're in the chorus, I, lovely, righty-o. And your ambition is to travel the world, have you done much travelling up till now?
Well, a little bit, went to America, Spain, France, Greece, but I'd love to do one with Paulie Nant, would love to go with him.
Lovely, that's it, well, let's hope that you get a few shillings tonight, put it towards a lovely property of all, that'd be nice. You've done a superb job for us tonight, you look absolutely cracking, may I wish you all the very best. Thank you very much, Lynne. Lovely. Our next finalist coming back, ladies and gentlemen, is contestant number nine, Claire Davis, please. Welcome back, Claire, many congratulations. It's a superb colour in your hair, isn't it? Lovely, that's absolutely superb, hair auburn, absolutely lovely. Now, you're a student, but you're hoping to become a professional model, so are you studying to be a model at the moment?
Yeah, I go, I'm on a lessons every Sunday, and every Thursday, and I've been to most three years, and I'm still a model.
It's a very, very competitive world, Claire, isn't it? What sort of modelling do you want to get into, to fashion, that sort of modelling?
Yeah, fashion.
We're not going to see you on page three or anything like that?
No.
It's a shame, isn't it? Cross the Y for this, right, okay. Claire, we, it's a very, very competitive world, is there plenty of work down in this part of the world, or would you have to go to perhaps London, a big city, to further a modeling career?
Yeah, there's nothing connected, you have to go to London.
You're going to have to get into it that way, and it's very difficult, but, you know, with a lot of effort, we wish you all the best, we hope you get into that. You enjoy also horse-riding and overseas travelling, first of all, tell us, do you have your own horse?
No, I used to go Australia every week, and I enjoyed, which was a good start there, and...
But you've never owned your own horse, so, I mean, you can go out having a little trip on the, on the horse and bring it back, let someone else clear up all the mess and rub the horse down, etc.
Yeah.
That's the best way to do it, isn't it? You like overseas travelling, where have you been up to now, Claire?
Like everywhere, Spain, Far East, Paris, um...
So, just about everywhere at the moment, lovely. Any one particular country that you like to go to, Far East perhaps?
America.
America, right, what's the fascination of America, then, Claire?
Well, film stars and, you know, Disneyland.
Is that an ambition of yours, to meet a famous film star? Have you got a favourite?
Yeah.
Which one is it? There's so many, yes, that's right. Are you into sort of the Rocky-type character, Sylvester Stallone, or more of a Robert Redford man?
Sylvester Stallone.
Victor, yeah, Sylvester Stallone, he's got all the muscles in the right place as well. Now, I say you look absolutely lovely, a nice choice of outfit, a lovely smile for us, and we wish you all the very best tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. She's just seventeen years of age. Well done, Claire. Our next finalist, ladies and gentlemen, would you please welcome back contestant number ten, Linda Derek. Welcome back, Linda. Lots of support tonight, that's very nice indeed. Now, sign of the times, it says occupation currently unemployed, are you looking out for something at the moment?
I'm a foodie, I'm a chef.
Well, I would have thought there's plenty of jobs for you, pretty less there, cooking a meal, who could refuse a meal?
I've never stopped any job this evening.
Any restaurateurs, yes, lovely, have you got a, most chefs obviously have a favourite meal that they like to cook, have you got one that you like to cook and eat, have you got a particular favourite?
I'm into Indian food, actually.
Are you? Yes, you're into the vindaluz and everything else. Right, when you're not doing that, you enjoy some, doing some modeling, now ask who you do that for and what type of modeling you do?
I do for barber on some, actually, a majority of my work is charity.
Oh, I see, most of the work is for charity work, so therefore creating a few bob for the less fortunate in the area. Is it mostly fashion modeling?
Yes, catwalk modeling most of the time, for various charities, the May's Charity, I did one last year.
Lovely, so what's it like when you put on all these expensive clothes and walk up and down the cattle, then you've got to give it all back at the end of the night, haven't you?
Awful. Awful.
Awful. Are you very fashion conscious? I'm sure all ladies are.
I try to be.
I mean, do you think we're up with the French, the Paris fashions, et cetera? Are we over in the UK, we're not?
No, the French women tend to be a bit less stylish.
Do you think so? Well, I don't think they're as good-looking as that.
Thank you.
I really don't. But you keep yourself nice and trim by keeping fit. How do you keep fit, Linda?
I put a mountain bike. I cycle about six miles a day.
Really? Six miles a day? Come on, the end of the week, you'd be about forty-two miles away then, wouldn't you? You look absolutely lovely. Nice choice of outfit tonight, nice colour, and I wish you all the very best in the competition. Thank you very much. Here we go, contestant number ten. Here's from Bury Court, and she's twenty-eight years of age. Who's our next finalist? Well, it's contestant number eleven, Linda Cunningham, please. Another lovely lass with a superb, and a lovely smile. That's a nice smile for us, Linda, thank you very much indeed. From Trum Saren, very close to here. You are an assistant manager of?
Posters.
Posters, could you enlighten me?
Menswear.
Posters menswear, really? So, what's that, suits and everything else?
Jeans, t-shirts, shirts.
Is that the Clenethley branch, is it?
Yes.
Smash it, and that's lovely. You just think when fellas go into a men's shop that it would be a fellow servant, don't you? I mean, do you do all the measurements and that? I've been shopping in the wrong place since I was young. Well, I think, I think, I suppose. I mean, are the fellas in the United Kingdom, are they pretty well dressed, conscious, do you think? Clenethley man, yes. Are you sort of attached to a Clenethley man? You are indeed, you've got, smash it. Do you make sure that he's attired correctly every time?
I try to.
You try to, lovely. Well, when you're not doing that, you enjoy photography and swimming. Is that photography just for fun, family snaps, et cetera? Or do you do go out and take wedding photos and earn a few shillings on the choir?
No, wish I could, just for fun, yeah.
Just for fun, but you've got all the expensive gear, haven't you?
Well, my boyfriend does, yeah.
Oh, he's got all the gear, and you go along with it, lovely. You enjoy swimming, that? Now, you said that's a marvellous way of keeping yourself nice and trim, but it's obviously doing the business for yourself. Are you, was you a keen swimmer that you entered competitions? Or is it just basically for fun?
Just for fun, yes.
Stone, you no harm at all, Linda, it really isn't. Are you a lady that would like to go trapping anywhere in particular, any exotic place that you'd like to go to?
Not really, no.
No? No one particularly that you'd like to? You're happy Clenethley goers, you are. And you look absolutely superb, and I'm going to wish you all the very best tonight. I know everyone will give you a big round of applause. Thank you very much indeed. Linda Cunningham, contestant number eleven, Conford Saren. Our next finalist, ladies and gentlemen, is contestant fifteen, Estelle Effrich. Lovely smile, lovely hairdo, absolutely superb. A nice choice of outfit tonight. Is white your normal colour, Estelle?
No, it's black.
You normally go for the blacks, but you've gone for the whites tonight. It really suits you, absolutely, smash it. And it's a super name as well, Estelle. You don't hear that name so often these days, do you? You're a student studying to be obviously a teacher, yes?
Yes, studying to, and I hope to go to college.
I'm with you. What age group are you going to hopefully be teaching?
Primary school, because children are very little, it must work, right?
Right, okay. So you obviously have to learn all the subjects, and you're not going to specialise in just one, then?
No, it's a special degree where you do specialise in all subjects.
I see, lovely. She's very intelligent at school. Tell me how brainy you are. Have you got the harmful levels and A-levels, Estelle, have all that?
I passed all eight.
You passed all eight, smash it. What about you? Yes, why not, you did, go for it, actually. What property do you hope that you go to, Estelle?
Hopefully, some, maybe a bit.
Well, we wish you all the very, very much a success and hope that you do become a successful teacher. You're also keen on sports and keeping fit. What sports do you enjoy?
I did netball five years, represented my school. Hockey three years, I do paddle, tennis, squash.
So you do keep yourself nice and trim? It's become the thing of the seventies, eighties, and now the nineties, to keep yourself fit. Lots of sports activities around. You also like socialising. How do you do that? Are you a disco girl, or you like to go to the discos?
Disco girl, got to dance.
Yeah, you've got to dance. Any favourite type of music that you enjoy?
All kinds, as long as you can dance to.
All kinds, as long as you can dance. Any particular favourite venues around the area that is a favourite haunt of yours?
No, anywhere.
Anywhere. Do you like to go out with the rest of the girls? Or any particular fellas in particular? Or just with the girls?
With the girls, no. I was a teenager, I went there, so I just sit.
And why not? Good crowd, you're guaranteed applause, not just for them, but for everybody else. We wish you all the very best tonight. Thank you very much indeed. Two more ladies to greet. The first of which you can say hello to right now with a nice round of applause is contestant seventeen, Louise Clements. Hello, Louise. Lovely, smash it. You've got some smashing smiles in Clenethley tonight, they're really, they're superb. Now, Louise, you have an unusual occupation, if I may say that, because you're an antique steamer. And you look a pretty young lass, and you don't seem to think that you'd be involved with something old. But tell us a little bit about what you do.
I think I prefer to look to the past rather than the future. And the furniture's so lovely. It all has delightful little stories to go along with it. It's much more interesting than buying new furniture. And that's the way people feel nowadays. They want to go back to the old, gadget values, and that's why they buy new furniture.
I see. So my MFI stuff's not a lot of good, then? You don't think in a few years' time it'll be worth anything?
Firewood.
Firewood, right. Okay, yes, fair enough. Now, do you work for a big company? Or just a local shop? Or is it your own business or what?
It's my little business. But I couldn't have done without it, without my little half. He's been in the trade for years, and he's shown me the way to do things.
Right, and you specialise in furniture, although you probably would purchase other things as well, would you?
Yes.
Right, yeah, lovely. When you're not doing that, you enjoy interior design and painting. Is that a part-time profession? Or is that just purely for enjoyment?
It ties in nicely with furniture, because it means people can have their whole home designed the way they want it to be. They can have the furniture and decor.
I see, so you give out plenty of advice when people come into the shop and ask for it. I'm with you, that's smash it. Right, yeah. And are you a lady that likes to go travelling at all? Is there anywhere you would particularly like to go? Any particular countries where their antics are what you might go out there and look for?
Colonial India, definitely. I'd like to go to colonial India.
I think that would be rather lovely, too. If you ever go, tell me what bus you're going on, I'll get a ticket as well. Louise, lovely speaking to you, and I wish you all the best. Thank you very much indeed. Louise Clements, ladies and gentlemen, contestant seventeen. And she's thirty-four years of age, and she's from Rosslyn. So who's going to be our final finalist, ladies and gentlemen? We can tell you right now, is contestant number twenty, Jane East. Welcome back, Jane. Lots of support. Who have you brought with you tonight, Jane?
Burton Star.
Burton Star, always a quick one, Claire, lovely. That's who you work for, isn't it?
Yes, part-time, yes.
Tell us exactly what you do there, part-time?
I'm a part-time cashier.
Smash it, all in charge of all the money. Are you a lady that loves ending money all the time?
Um, yes.
Are you good with money, or are you wasteful or what?
Well, I think I'm good with money, yes.
Quite good, lovely. Well, you've chosen very wisely when you spent it on clothes. You've chosen for yourself, but Burton's is a man shop, isn't it?
Well, yes, yes, it is.
So you have to go, any particular, are you a lady that goes to the big stores? Or more of the boutiques or what, when you go out to choose for yourself?
Well, I like shopping upstairs in Burton's Principals for women.
Oh, they do, there are, there do ladies now in Burton's, do they?
Upstairs, Principals, yeah.
Oh, good, that's a nice little plug for that as well. Ten percent discount and all that. Oh, smash it, yes, I'd be there, yes. As you can see, I need some, I should be in, right. You'd like to become a professional, or you'd like to become a singer and entertainer? So obviously, you are known for doing a little bit of singing, I would think. Then, do you go around the clubs, I think?
I have done, yes. I've been singing since the age of five.
Smash it. Any particular person that you model yourself on? Shirley Bass is that type of musical?
Light musicals, I think, that's my scene.
That's your scene. Would you have liked to have done it professionally? Or is that still an aim of yours?
Well, I have two smaller children at the moment. But when they grow up a bit, I think I'd like to go back to singing. That's my main ambition.
Well, that'd be smash it. And let's hope you're singing with joy tonight when the results all come out. I certainly wish you all the very best, and it's been nice talking to you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Thank you, Jane, she's twenty-five years of age. Right, yeah. At this point, just to remind the judges and for everybody else, we're going to invite our final eight ladies back onto the back of the rostrum just for one final look. They've done exceedingly well to get this far. I'm sure you agree with me with those comments. So let's welcome back our eight finalists on block, ladies and gentlemen, in Miss Clenethley 1991, sponsored by the Clenethley Star. Absolutely lovely, keep smiling, girls. The judges might still be judges. We've had photographs, it's a good opportunity. If you have a friend relation, or if you just want to photograph yourself and you've got a camera, take it right now. Eight absolutely lovely girls. I thought they all spoke absolutely superb. And we've fingers crossed, time results will be coming up a little bit later. Once we see our judges are quite content, we'll let the girls go. But we're still making a few notes. Do keep smiling, girls, it's important. They're looking for, of course, the looks, the personality, the deportment, the hairstyles, and your personality. Keep smiling. Roy's writing an essay there, I think, I'm not sure what he's doing. Are my judges quite happy? Okay, that's going to be an arduous task, isn't it? To pick three from eight wonderful ladies like this. Give our judges a nice round of applause if they leave us, ladies and gentlemen. They're both very dear. Oh, that's going to be a difficult one. And the ladies are going, come on, give them a nice round of applause if they leave us. Fingers crossed for you all, girls. They can't wait to get off, can they? Right. Have you enjoyed it so far?
Yes!
Very, very difficult. I tell you what you can do for me, ladies and gentlemen. We had nineteen girls in the competition, so obviously, at this point, although they probably all come along and enjoyed the experience and had a nice friendly night, because there's no bitchiness backstage tonight. Believe me, there really hasn't been. They've been absolutely smashing. But eleven girls, obviously, have been disappointed up till now. We can only please so many. Eight have got through to this stage. The other eleven didn't come out and spoil the effect into the audience, so you know, oh, she didn't get to a winner. They stayed backstage and gave all the girls plenty of support. So how about a big thank you with a round of applause for the eleven ladies backstage? Thanks, Mary. I personally think they were all winners. After I looked at all them girls tonight, and I realised why the prisons are full. I really do. But when you see lovely, when you see lovely girls like that, it makes you want to burst into song and things like that. And I thought, I wonder what songs I can select tonight which go with, you know, lovely girls and all that. And being a married man, you suddenly occasionally have to think about the wife. Not very often, you know. What a job you have when you get married, don't you? Do you know what I mean? I'm married a problem. I met my wife at Gatwick Airport. She was, she was sniffing luggage. Do you know, we had an argument on our wedding day? She wanted to be in the photos. I couldn't understand it. Just occasionally you think about them, don't you? And I occasionally come up with a nice little tune. That's a nice one, Robert, isn't it? Yes. This is a little song which was originally recorded by Lee Grieven a few years ago. And I decided to sing it because no one else was singing it. And I recorded it and sold one copy. Then Bet Medler recorded it and sold four thousand million copies. The difference is, I've still got mine. I think it sums up people in this business and a wife that tags around after you sometimes. It's a very, very pretty song. Hope you like yours exactly like this. Must have been cold there in my shadow To never have sunlight on your face Always content to let me shine You always walked a step behind I was the one with all the glory You were the one with all the strength Only a face without a name Never once heard you complain Did you ever know you are my hero You're everything I would like to be I can't fly higher than an eagle You are the wind beneath my wings Mine have appeared to go unnoticed I have it all here in my heart Watch you to know I know the truth I would be nothing without you Did you ever know you are my hero You're everything I would like to be I can't fly higher than an eagle You are the wind beneath my wings Did you ever know you are my hero You're everything I would like to be Why I can't fly higher than an eagle You are the wind beneath my wings You are the wind beneath my wings You're a lovely crowd. I can't afford it tonight, I really can't. I'd better leave my little wife indoors tonight. Because I think that's the only problem when you get married, isn't it? You normally inherit a mother-in-law. That can be a problem, can't it? You got your mother-in-laws in tonight? It's a shame, we could have had a hanging. Do you have a problem like I do at Christmas? And times like that when the mother-in-law comes down? You get those terrible words, don't you, at Christmas? You just put the decorations up, you're warming the turkey for the oven, you're putting the presents under the tree, and then your wife comes through the door and she says it, don't you? My mother wants to come down for four days.[1724.32] I said, what for? She says she don't like it in the attic. And when they come down, you don't know how to please them, do you, you know? I said, well, I said, we can't have her down again. She said, why not? I said, well, she's ugly. Well, she is ugly. Know what I mean by ugly? She goes in a bank, they turn the cameras off. She's ugly, my love. I said, you can't have her, she's frightening the kids. She said, well, I said, you've got to be sixteen to look at her. And when she comes down, you don't know what to say. I said, what do you want for Christmas? She said, don't spend a lot, will you? I've only come to help with the cleaning. And they sweep it all under the carpet, don't they? You've got to walk uphill to the fireplace. I said, what do you want then? She said, well, just give me something small for the bathroom. I thought, oh, prawn o' fish, where can I get? Do you know what I decided to do? I thought I'd go into the capital of the principality, Cardiff, and do the shopping, because they've got some of them posh shops there, haven't they? Where posh people who've got money go to, haven't they, you know? How's Cardiff? I was in there, it was so nice. Lovely blonde coming, she was beautiful. She called the manager over, she said, I've been round your shop, where is it? Oh, he said, what do you want? She said, where's your lingery department? Lingery, what's that? She said, you know, we sell underwear and all that. Oh, he said, it's over there, it's next to the lingerie. She said to the fellow, she said, do you sell those novelty knickers, you can get any message you want printed on the front? Oh, he said, we do them. She said, well, I've been driving my car round Cardiff behind a bus. On the bus, there was a sign, on the sign, it said, if you can read this, you're too close. She said, I want that message on the knickers. He said, do you want it in capitals or script? She said, Braille. You know, the only other problem when you get married, you, you see, you fellas have probably married a good one. You've probably married one that can look after you. Now, it's no shame, I'm not getting sexist, girls, because it's no shame if you can't cook, is it? I just married one that's a bit GBH in the kitchen, do you know what I mean? I come home the other day, my little boy sent his dinners burnt. I said, who are you now? He said, the chip shop's caught fire. She can't cook, she's a tough, you know, she really can't. I don't think Yorkshire pudding should glow in the dark, do you? We had rhubarb tart the other week, it was two foot long, half inch wide. We've got the only dog that begs for Alka-Seltzer. But it's so easy for them now, aren't they, you know, I mean, you can buy special tools and all that for the kitchen. I got her a pressure cooker. I shouldn't have done, we had carrots in orbit after that, huh? So she understands, she buys that fast food. I don't like that, do you? She come back the other week with all them vindaloo curries, I said, oh dear. I had that, I realised why Gandhi had a nappy on all this. I said, I'll treat you, I'll take you out for a meal. I said, well, we'll take Murphy out next door because he's been as good as gold because Murphy's a nice one. Do you know someone just brought in a microwave bed? It wasn't half good, he had eight hours' sleep in four minutes. And I thought I'd take him out and treat him because he had took me out, he took me out the other week to an Irish Greyhound meeting and it was not good. They used a real hair and five socks. Well, like a gamble, it's a big card game, the other week, gamer brags, this fellow said, I'll go a pound, Murphy said, I'll go two pound. This fellow said, I'll go four pound, Murphy said, I'll go eight pound. This fellow said, I'll go sixteen pound, Murphy said, I'll go thirty-three pound fifty. The bloke said, we got wrong here, Murphy, start again, I'll go a pound. Murphy said, I'll see you. We have a result, have we? I can see a result. Let's move on. Well, they've come up with a nice quick result, we can't fault them now, can we? That's absolutely right, so I'm getting the wrong cards out of the pocket, I'm getting excited now, aren't I? Dear, oh dear, right. Now then, we do have a result and to present the prizes etcetera, that's the next stage of the competition. Oh, look at that, a broken leg. Get that healed. Even a smashing audience, and I have to say that, I know all the ladies backstage were saying you gave them great encouragement right throughout the night and that was absolutely superb. We thank you for that and we hope you're going to do exactly the same when we announce the winners. And we'd like to invite up onto the stage now to present the prizes. We're very fortunate tonight to have with us the mayor and mayoress, councillor and Mrs John Evans. And they're making their way out. Also, we have Joe Phillips, of course, the theatre manager here, Robert Lloyd, who is the editor of the Cunnetly Star, who've come up with the generous sponsorship once again of this very popular competition this year. And of course, last year's winner, whose reign ends tonight and she'll be handing over the title, what a lovely last she is as well, we have Angela Davis. So how about a nice round of applause on block? That's a nice way, lovely. This is a result, you know, is it? Right here. Now, just before we do the result, we do have so many people to thank, I just quickly whip through them because so many people helped to make sure that the evening runs smoothly. Of course, we'd like to thank all of the girls that took part tonight, the lovely Lyn Courtney for comparing the first half of the competition, she did an absolutely superb job, I know you agree. We have Robert and Nick playing the music, the lovely Julie Palmer, the cabaret artist in the first half, Ray Cole, we wish her the best of luck in the next round. Cunnetly Star, represented by the editor no less tonight, thank you Robert for coming along and sponsoring once again. We have John Barrington, ladies and gentlemen, the deputy manager here of this lovely theatre who designed this super set tonight and absolutely superb job and the catwalk and everything. Thanks go out to John. And also the Hallen, the state manager, Hallen the Eskimo. We have on the lights Keith tonight on sound, David, and not forgetting the two Allens and the Ian on block. How about a nice thank you to them all for the smooth running of the competition tonight. Right here. It's a bit like when you open up when someone won an Oscar, isn't it, you know, you get all these nominations and we have a result, right here. And as always, ladies and gentlemen, for such competitions, we read them out in reverse order. Okay. Third place tonight, ladies and gentlemen, to receive their prize, third place tonight was contestant number ten, Linda Derrick. You look absolutely lovely. Absolutely superb, lovely choice of outfit, a lovely smile and she spoke absolutely superb on the microphone. Congratulations to Linda. Our second place lady tonight, a runner-up to Miss Cunnetly, second place went to contestant number seventeen, Louise Clements. Congratulations to Louise. So who is Miss Cunnetly nineteen ninety-one to be crowned, to have that lovely sash put around her and collect the lovely prize? Miss Cunnetly nineteen ninety-one, ladies and gentlemen, is contestant number two, Sharon Daniels. Brilliant talent, nice dress. Robert has the prize. Angela will hand over the crown or crown our winner this year, the lovely Charm. Nice bouquet of flowers for the leading mayoress as well, that's rather lovely as well. Isn't that superb? She's watching lovely, lovely eyes. I see Mary Poppins coming from the area to our winner tonight, Sharon Daniels. You've been superb, ladies and gentlemen, a very popular result, a lovely start, and thank you to our judges. We have left five ladies slightly disappointed at the end, let's give them a big round of applause, please backstage, another great competition, haven't we? I can tell you, all of the girls now are invited to a little bit of a party backstage, there's a few drinks, a nice little bun fight etcetera, that's going to carry on for a little while yet, so everyone gets to have a nice evening. At this moment in time, I believe we're going to ask everyone to stand for the Welsh National Anthem.